Test. We'll have to do the zoom or the.
Oh, yes, YouTube. Yes. But we don't have to start that.
No, and I think we'll do the same thing and put the throw box.
On the podium?
Yeah, that worked well last night.
Yeah, because then people won't ever touch it. Is Deb coming back or did she?
I had no idea. I haven't. I sent her a text, I left a check on her desk, but. I don't know.
So we have Joel. I'm just gonna space them out and.
Yeah. Well, Debbie is coming back. He just asked me if Debbie was coming back and I said, I don't know. I went and talked to her. How is your?
Mister.
Yes.
Feels good.
Did you really?
Today more so than any of them, but yeah. My ass stopped on my way. I ran to the room. No big deal. We got him.
Joe's going next.
I just didn't even test.
You know what? It may pop up here. I don't know.
Did you live in Concord? No, it was over today. It wasn't over till three, but. We left about two because I needed to be ready in the warehouse, but. It was business. I did not realize they did, but I learned something today. It was just our team. Ryan said it. Did you know that there's not a lot of these lips? They got in the backseat. So our jail bit was separate.
Oh, really? I did not know that. I didn't either. It's where Brian said it.
Oh, well, that's. Yeah, so that's good. So Brian is Cory, but I'm sure he's not that. And I said, you know. A question. I was talking about something else. I did a question. Wait. In the statute, it says that all the lips have to be moved to the shelter. What's the logic of that? Because I don't think anybody knows. I don't know, but I can find out. And it's been a week. Since I talked to him. And he's not helping. Uh, he's on vacation.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because when we went Saturday night, Janice was talking about it. I'm pretty sure Janice said they were on vacation.
Okay, well, I'll give him, you know, but he was like. Okay.
Well, so, but I did learn that today that.
We're single now.
That we are. There's twelve counties left and we're one of them. We just happened to throw Henry County out there.
Oh, okay.
Like, well, thank you.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, so ours is outside of the.
Outside of it.
But I thought, and maybe I misunderstood Brian a bit. I have. And I, and I.
You know what? We'll have to watch.
Not here.
Oh, wait, no, there's a whole bunch right here.
I started. I started the meeting. So joking.
I sent him a text.
I know.
Yeah.
But the recording. That we keep local started, which means. Part of the AI thing may pick up whatever. We'll just have to. Don't just take whatever AI sends you and post it.
Right. Well, that's why I'm in the microphone. You want to put that back in the cabinet so that it'll pick up anything. These are all.
Ashley.
I'll just put that up here.
Well, we put the. We put the cube up there. Because then people. We put the cube up there so people don't have to.
But I thought. Like, we live out in country. All three of us live out in country, so we would only pay one point two. But the people in the city would pay that one point two plus the city would be one point two. That's the way Ryan decided today. The way Ryan said it was if the city pays one point two. Then the people within that. Limit would pay only the one point two and the counties would pay one point two. That person wouldn't ever pay two point two. That's why we understood Brian or Brian decided today, but that's not how I understood.
That's not how I understood it either.
Yeah. But you know. I don't know. You know, Martin, it's gonna take all the people with it. Nobody goes long down there. It's like a council. We get that we go whether these little.
You can't just earmark the same amount right back to the same version.
You can. There's a point five percent. And I give them twenty. Because he didn't get, he could still be the one one vote.
I would take that joke.
Don't do this.
Yeah. Why? It wasn't like a city, did it?
Are you guys mad at me, guys?
I mean, wouldn't you think it would come up? I mean, they came up with forty thousand dollars to get to the. Ball diamond.
They gave thirty seven thousand a very good, like Jeff, Brian, Derek Cash for the house.
Casino money, I think, is what they gave. But it's like. That's a lot of money. Just to walk away from. Yeah.
There's another call.
Yeah. Did you know that they're going because it's, and it's gonna be less? Because they're going from town to year to.
We can, but even though we got our full amount this year. Now. However, that's a new fiscal year.
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah. But they said. They said, did you feel not to? Yeah. They're not gonna be that many that sits for years.
Yeah, it just gives them.
Are you coming tomorrow? I'm gonna go and see.
Did you?
I said.
Yeah.
It's my. Some suggestion. I said, thank you. Probably we can't. About an hour later, he responded with, no. And I said, okay.
Wow. You have your. Message out the letter.
He may, where he's at, he'll be lucky to get.
Well, he texted me earlier today.
Show's delivered.
Okay. Cause I just sent one to him. Not earlier today, but since it says.
Yeah, he'll be lucky working that to get service unless he goes out in the middle of the lake somewhere. I did learn today that no department has been appointed by the commissioner or that are. Sign our table.
The highway team?
EMS, the other. I don't know. He appoints Angela to sign. I said, I think. This quarter. She may be able to, but they're not appointed by a governing law, governing body. We have. We have to change our ways.
So who signed them now?
Commissioners. Whoever's over into appointment.
Well, whatever.
He sure did.
Park board. Well, I know superintendent, because they did.
But, but like I said, they don't approve their freedom.
Okay. They voted to. Kate Harmon. He lives in Slice, but I don't know.
Yeah, he's in.
Okay, but then now I do know. Okay.
Which will be good, because that's why you don't.
Yeah, that's what they said, that he has some military. Oh, good.
Oh, they did hire him?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I seen that on that AI thing you said today.
Yeah, they told her last time. And I said, okay.
Okay, what?
I know. Well, I said, see if you can connect and he said, okay.
Okay.
Oh, good. Cause I kept thinking, the name's not been so familiar to me, but.
That was Jody's name.
Yeah, I wouldn't put two and two together and Frank. I was in Jeff's office and she. Actually, she.
Sixty feet.
We had to make the. I mean, Jeff is on the phone or fifteen or something.
Fifty.
When I still weren't calling her. Nothing goes.
I know that is your first time. No, it's. Well. She.
It's kind of like.
Yeah, she actually, the other day.
Really?
I don't. She said, here.
I don't.
Couldn't figure out how.
Yeah, I know.
Um, he.
That's not old.
No, that's what I'm saying. He's only maybe sixty five.
It's not old.
Seventy five used to be old, but it's not anymore.
Oh.
Eighty five. I almost, but I did very good. Work. Draw a round. That is the. If they have you draw from the ground, search your clock with twelve hundred.
Never did.
All the numbers. They tell you to.
Do eleven. Put the hands on eleven.
If you can't do that, it's dementia.
Really?
Yes. I got. But they, they don't.
So what happens? What happens if Joe can't connect? What happens if he can't connect? I mean.
Then he's, they fire me. Then that's. They'll be okay. They'll be.
As long as Susan shows up. And Steve.
He said it's working off.
Okay.
Um. I don't.
I think. I think. He's actually one of those. And. I think they missed it probably.
It's always.
He's the, he's the order counter. Preparation.
I gave all three up. She can go from her outlook. She, like, can pull up the commissioner's calendar. She can pull up those three, drag those items across, so it shows up on her personal account.
Maybe one she does.
She just got reading and create.
I don't know. What was the? Um, I have one reason, like, in New York.
Yeah, you know, we.
One day.
DLGS went over, kind of two tasks.
That's kind of like. They, they got that. Who works up?
Those were sixty five, okay, sixty thousand, seventy thousand. No. You can put it all there. It's all the work. You can split it. If you have enough of the credit in the essential questions.
Probably a book link to part of, you know. I don't think it was at all. They're just making it so happen, you know.
Exactly.
And they're giving us all every time.
Isn't she explaining to?
They said that the reason they did that is because we have.
So long as you have a lawyer. That's what they said at the. Council.
Okay. It's a little bit of time.
Let's talk about it. And. Things that. And. Studies done.
You're starting now, what they're doing now.
I wasn't.
Yeah. It might be one of the things I can.
He hasn't said anything.
They just allowed him in.
Okay. Joe's waiting. Yeah, I figured he's probably out in the middle of the lake where he's at. There is no service unless you. From this place flooding or something. Or did I misunderstand?
I don't know. I know it's been.
Or if it's just their time to go down there. I don't. Or.
Uh, you need power. It's under the floor. That little, either right behind you is easier.
That's what I heard. Pretty doing.
Good. If Joe connects, I'm happy.
Then you're good. Yeah. We need to sit down, Susan and Steve. We need to sit down and talk. Because we learned some new stuff.
Oh, gee, thanks.
It doesn't look like.
Oh.
That's not how I feel. How are you?
Yeah.
Home side.
For you.
Thanks. Sorry, make you.
I'm just. I hear you.
Yeah. For the age, so. Yeah.
Okay, leave it on. Okay.
Oh, fuck.
Yeah, didn't change.
If you can, if you got back. Will you get back? I really think that's.
Chiefs.
Have you seen that on? Can you come in on paper?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Hey, Joe. If you can hear me. Either reply or turn your camera on.
Okay. Yeah. David, I'm.
Hey, Steve. So it feels like.
I mean, they're all the developers. No, I've been better than where.
I seem like an email.
This is part of.
Because one of my kids is more than apt to call. My kids are gonna call. I said, I gotta turn down. My kids will call anytime. They don't know how they always. They still call.
Yeah, sure. Maybe needs.
You've got to be seen. It looks like you're set.
What if I all these just. He's saying. Who the heck? Joe, Joe.
Yeah, we've been doing lots of them. Yeah. Yeah. Those are the big old conversation. Yeah, any, any. Any board. That you.
So.
Any department. I didn't know. Any, any department had that you. We would be the highway, EMS. You. In terms of, no, I don't know about. Um. You go. They just. They, well, they do have. So we should be.
Can you hear me?
Please. Yeah, we can hear you, Joe.
Thank you.
What do you think? All right. Wait, my head, I have a faceless. In other words, completely free. He would raise me up to the best. Would from the. And I would. Anyways, what? She could do it. If you have it on. We'll get. I think we do the morning that Sunday. I'm starting to be mad for something we ever did.
Uh, she. There's others. Oh. But we have this.
You take it, right?
Yeah. I mean, look.
Ask. I didn't. It comes up. No, Channel Eight, I just. It looks like, yeah, because fifty nine. That's the only reason I knew about. I had forgotten about it. Fifty nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Because I wasn't expecting. No, like, oh, he just. My friend. Yeah.
There were.
The ones that.
Okay. I was looking. You never.
I can't remember.
If.
They're on it. So you could never.
Never.
So you just. What you're saying. Just like.
He's with. Yeah. Man, hell, nervous. Gary.
It's not.
Yeah.
Well, she's telling me it may not. Okay. Yeah, it is. What I need to do is get this down. Have you got a date?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on that first day.
Yeah, I was pretty sure. Okay, I can remember. Absolutely.
So after. You want to. He wants.
Okay.
All right.
He's gonna be. On the code. Okay.
Always.
I think.
Yes, sir.
So we just see one of us.
Okay. They're okay. I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm yeah. I'm sure. Question.
Welcome everybody to Wednesday, July twenty third's commissioner meeting. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge and the short prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And I am stating that in the name. To the republic. For which it stands. One nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we give thanks for the opportunity that you have given us to serve our community. We ask that in doing this service, that you grant us wisdom and sound judgment in making these decisions. For our community and our county. These things we ask in your heavenly name. Amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of previous meeting? And if so, do I have a motion?
To approve.
Do I have a second?
You're going to have to second.
That's short.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioner hadn't.
He didn't say anything.
He didn't. No.
I. Joe can say aye, but I can't get my camera to work over.
Okay.
Well, I'll just vote in second for you. How's that, Joe?
I think that's legal.
That would be fine.
Commissioners had an opportunity to view the claims. And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner had an opportunity to view the payroll.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the. Treasurer's monthly report. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the IT monthly report for June.
Motion to approve.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have weights and measures report from June sixteenth through July fifteenth.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion's been made seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Corey Murphy.
So if I put my sunglasses on during, while I'm talking, they're serving as my glasses. My, my, my non sunglasses are hopefully on my office desk. But I'll try to do it without.
Okay, I just thought maybe you wanted to look cool.
No.
Oh, no.
Appreciate it.
We're here all week.
Yeah. So what I've given you is a timetable. Related to a process that the city of Newcastle is going through. And it is related to the Ready Two Housing Project. So it impacts the county. From the perspective of the food and beverage funds. That have been committed. Uh, to that project. And so when I appeared before the county council last week. I talked about how I thought the funds were going to flow. And I was wrong. I've got new information now. And so I, when I got that new information, I, I talked to Debbie. And I also had a conversation with Chad Maliko, the president of the county council. The county council already took their action. Last fall, you know, committing the funds. Pledging the funds to the project. But it's the commissioners that actually have proven the invoice. And so that's why I'm going to detail to give you a heads up. On, on what's coming down the pike. So this process is. Um, very similar. To what the county did for Ashbury Fields. The residential development project at County Road two hundred north and State Road three. It is the Economic Development Commission. It is the Economic Development Commission, different from my organization. Economic Development Commission statute. Newcastle, under advice from their legal counsel, Lisa Lee, who's helping us through this project, we're using that as a procurement method as a way to deliver public funds, both state and local, to this public-private partnership. And so there's, I think the key point, and, and Joel can, can help me out or disagree. The key point is, is the city's Economic Development Commission will hold a public hearing and give taxpayers an opportunity to come and be heard. That public hearing will be on Monday, August eighteenth at three P M. And there'll be notice in the newspaper to comply with the law, but that's Monday, August eighteenth, three P M at the City of Newcastle Chambers, two twenty-seven North Main Street. Yes, there'll be a quiz at the end of this. And then that commission will hold the public hearing. They'll make a recommendation to the City of Newcastle Common Council. And the common council will do very similarly what the, the county council did. After completing that process, that is a legal, recognized procurement method to deliver the public funds to the project. What is the project? It is public infrastructure supporting the residential development. It is not the construction of the homes. Okay? So it is the roads, the water, the sewer, the drainage, everything that goes into supporting the construction. The first draw, based on the information that I have now, I already, I already started out this, the information had changed, right? So I'm going to put a little asterix. We're still working on the budget. But based on all the information that I have now, the first draw will be from the food and beverage of approximately five hundred thousand dollars in September. And so you, you see on August twenty-seventh, you'll be presented with an invoice. And I just wanted to give you a heads up on the process that we're going through. Make you aware if you want to participate. And then you just didn't show up to your meeting on August twenty-seventh and have a half a million dollar invoice. You know, and you're wondering what's going on. The second draw, we anticipate in May of twenty-six of approximately five hundred thousand. The council, your council, the county council, committed a million dollars to this project. And so that's, right now, that's how we see the funds flowing. Joel, do you want to add anything or?
I mean, I think you've given a good overview of what the process is.
We're, when I say we, the, the project development team, we're also asking the state which procurement method? And there was two of them, more than you need to know, but there was a build, operate, transfer method. There was the E D C statute method. They signed off on the E D C statute method, and that's the one that we're, we're most comfortable with. Both would have worked. But we're more familiar with the E D C statute. Now, at the end of the E D C statute, we're not issuing a bond. We're issuing a forgivable loan. And so the food and beverage funds are captured within that forgivable loan. So there, there are specific benchmarks, performance metrics, that if, if the developer doesn't meet, they have to pay that money back. And so there's, there are safeguards we're putting in place on this project. So I wanted to give you guys a heads up that this was, this was coming. And, and all of this is good news because the developers in conversations with the National Home Builder, the National Home Builder is excited about our market. And they want the developer to be turning dirt this fall. And home construction would start in the spring. And so in round figures, it's four million dollars of public infrastructure, leveraging nearly fifteen million dollars in private home construction. Not possible without the food and beverage funds. And not, definitely not possible without the ready funds. So I'm appreciative of Henry County government of investing. And that's both this body and the county council. You, you have questions on this project? And then I have one other item.
We're good, I think.
Okay. There was a newspaper article recently about a proposed project or a potential project at State Road, State Road one oh nine and I seventy. The developer is hosting an open house on August sixth from seven A M to six P M at the Carey Center, twenty-five South Washington Street, Knightstown. I'll repeat it. It's an open house where the developer will be there to have conversations with interested persons all day long on August sixth from seven A M to six P M at the Carey Center. And the address for the Carey Center is twenty-five South Washington Street in Knightstown. And I'm sure you'll see other media on that, but I wanted to make the commissioners aware of that upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Let's see anybody from the chamber. Let's see Josh. Health Department. Highway Department, Brayden.
Good job.
Okay. Then Joe.
Well, I don't know how many people know, but eight fifty west. Was opened up yesterday. Probably one of the roads being blocked because of the small structure barrier. So that, that road got opened up yesterday. Seven hundred north should be opened back up about ten days.
Good news. I like good news.
The counties has, where we've had a contractor through federal aid, working on a sign project on the western four townships. Uh, that project's coming to a close. We have a pre-final inspection next, next Wednesday um, to finish everything up. This is a change order, change order number two. Change order number one was just a time extension with no money. This particular change order uh, is for nine thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, it includes additional money for um, signpost, additional signposts, okay, length. Uh, that's the unit price. And in, uh, there's a, uh, the sign sheet and supports removal, removal of some signs didn't happen. So they subtracted uh, six thousand eight hundred and six dollars off of that. You'll see it on page three on that. The sign sheet relocate, uh, there was seventy-two of them. That amounted to eight thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. And we had a sign that was, we needed to add for, uh, uh, it's called a point zero eight inch thickness. Uh, there's one and a half square feet for a total of twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And we had uh, uh, one sign for point one inches thickness. Uh, and there was eight square feet for a hundred and twelve dollars for a total of nine thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. We had, we had a lot of questions about the relocate signs. And I'm still going to have a discussion with the area engineer about it.
Also, I've gotten some complaints from some of the signs at intersections of the county that now you can't turn a semi without taking a sign down since we've relocated. So I didn't know if we needed to adjust on some of those where they're currently.
Need be the county highway will relocate. I don't want to pay these guys, these types of wages to relocate signs.
Yeah, those signs were installed by state specs. That was the specs they had to go by. So legally for them to do it correctly, that's how they're put in place by the specifications that they had to go by.
It was the comment that I made back to some of the complaints that I got. And I told them we would look at it afterwards to see if it, because if it is an issue and they're going to get mowed down every time you turn a semi, obviously it's going to be a problem. So we may have to move them accordingly, but.
But none of that worked and be done, still everything with the fire.
Okay. Not to be picky, Joe, but do you know there's a, uh, there's a penny difference on your front page to your third page?
That is.
Guess we owe a penny less.
I just wanted you to know that I was trying to pay attention.
Yeah.
Um, if, if you prove that signatures are on page five.
We have two of them. So you can take one and I.
Yeah, that's fine.
Make a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
A motion to approve and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Hi, Joe, we can see you now.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Is that's all you got?
Yeah.
You want to sign it now or you want to wait till the end of the meeting or?
Yeah, the meeting's fine.
Okay. Let me see, surveyor, Mr. Green. Not at this point. Seen invited from the sheriff's department. Debbie.
Just let you guys know that June thirtieth at one o'clock, I have you set up for your budget hearing with the council. It was pretty much the only free time, so.
July.
I think June, July, sorry. It's been.
Dang, I missed it.
Did you say three?
June thirty, or July thirtieth at one o'clock.
At one.
One o'clock.
Okay.
I go home, good night.
Jenny's not here. Tom, do you want anything on the park or?
No, I'm pissed.
Man, you're getting out of everything. Assessors, recorders, it's measures. Brian. Good. See anybody from there? D M A, Troy. Might as well.
All right. Back uh, the end of twenty twenty-four, uh, towards the end, fourth quarter, you approved the hazard mitigation plan that went to FEMA. Uh, the FEMA did get approved, or the plan did get approved by FEMA. Uh, the next step for now, for us now at the county level is to adopt the plan. Um, so we have Heather worked up a resolution number. And uh, I have the resolution here to adopt the plan uh, at the county level. And then each of the jurisdictions are in the process of adopting it as well. So. Once it's adopted, we have a year to get it adopted, but once it's adopted, then it's fully in effect. If there's any mitigation funds that would come back to the county, uh, any of the jurisdictions that participated and approved it or adopted it at their jurisdiction uh, would be, would qualify for any mitigation funds for their specific area. So it's important to adopt it.
That selfless plug, is that what that is?
No. Just if there's any one other jurisdictions listening.
You have nothing?
No, I've. I reviewed it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Do I have a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See anybody else on reports? Next up is the right set, right stuff payroll fee renewal contract. Any discussion? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Debbie, did you happen to know how much that went up by? I don't think.
How much what?
That right stuff contract went up by.
Um, like two hundred dollars.
Oh, okay. Because they increased our users quite a bit. I just didn't know how significant that was. Okay, very good. And we need to choose one of the options, three year or one year?
Three year, one year.
And did we just do a one year from last year?
I think so, but it looks like to me that if we do a one year again, then. No, I'm just saying, it looks like for me.
No, you did.
Because it was one year. Three year, it's automatic and it just renews and it doesn't say anything about increasing. It just automatically renews. One year, the agreement will automatically renew for an additional one-year term. And then it says that your rate will be subject to additional inflationary increase effective January first, twenty twenty-seven. It doesn't say that if we do the three year. So I'm wondering if we would save money by doing a three-year agreement because we're not subject to any cost increase. But your thoughts?
Do we have any precedent for other software applications?
Uh.
Sorry, is there any precedent for other software applications that, not just one year, but multi-year sometimes? If it makes sense, different time periods? Okay. I think.
All of these are subject to appropriation. I mean, if for whatever reason the council didn't appropriate funds, then you have the right to discontinue the contract. So.
So make a motion to do the three-year renewal period. The right stuff contract.
I have a motion in a second to do three-year renewal on right stuff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next up is the rezoning. Mr. Green. I ought to call you Mr. Red for this since we're doing a John Deere dealership.
I don't think you're going to get any discounts down there.
Probably not.
You should have it for you, uh, zone map change proposal number four eighty, uh, which references case B twenty-two eighty, which is a rezone uh, from light industrial to highway business on a parcel located at State Road one oh nine, uh, just north of Knightstown. Uh, that is a request by Conetic Equipment to rezone that. That's a more appropriate zoning for uh, their desired use, which is a farm implement and maintenance facility.
Well, this was approved at the uh, planning and zoning meeting uh, earlier.
Yes, this was approved at the uh, July seventeenth meeting. Which I see I made a typo there. It's July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-four.
Any discussion on the rezoning?
No discussion.
Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. So you might as well stay right there. So you might as well stay right there. Next up, we have a vending.
Thank you for coming.
We have a vending contract for Memorial Park. Uh, this had been on our itinerary before, and there was some changes to it. I'm assuming, Joel, you've had an opportunity to review it.
I've had a chance to look at it. I'm following the agreement.
Okay. You want to discuss this a little bit further, Tom?
I don't think so. You've seen it before. Uh, we're looking at putting some, uh, of one vending machine right now. There may be two, but, uh, they're planning for one initially. It's kind of an experiment to see what the, you know, response is gonna be. But there seemed to be a number of people that would like to see some snacks or something out there.
Okay. Well, it seemed there was nothing concerning legal. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the vending contract for Memorial Park.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We've already done the resolution. Any discussion from the public? Well, it went crickets then, didn't it?
I have something.
You have something. You're not the public.
I know. And so I'm, we have had some con, some discussion with someone in the county that's been having trouble with their neighbors', um, beekeeping operation. So I'd like to make a motion that we create a, a committee that would be managed in a short period of time to discuss whether or not there could be any type of beekeeping ordinance that would make sense for the county. And my motion is to include one beekeeper from each district. I have asked someone from the Southern District and include zoning administrator and our attorney commissioners and discuss if there's any way that we could do it that wouldn't be restrictive, but would also protect some neighbors who are feeling like they're being held hostage in their homes right now. So that's on the table.
I second.
I have. Go ahead. Go ahead, Joe.
I was just going to, yeah, I'll wait and listen to you then. Yes, go ahead.
Well, we have a motion if you're willing to second it and I didn't know if.
I'm willing to, willing to second.
Hey, I have a motion and a second to form a committee to look into what we need to do about beekeeping. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Anything else? Do you want to be public again or do you want to be?
I think I'm done. Sorry.
Hearing nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for participating and attending.